Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call the special meeting of the Ottawa Police Services Board to order for February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. On behalf of the board, let me start by apologizing for the delayed start to our board meeting today. It has been a very busy day. I want to start also by recognizing that Ottawa is located on the unsated territory of the Ogonkwin Anishnaabik Nation. The peoples of the Ogonkwin Anishnaabik Nation have lived on this territory for millennia. Their culture and their presence have nurtured and continued to nurture this land. The Ottawa Police Services Board honors the peoples and the land of the Ogonkwin Anishnaabik Nation. Today Ottawa is home to approximately forty thousand First Nations Inuit and Nauti people. Ottawa's indigenous community is diverse, representing many nations, languages, and customs. The Ottawa Police Services Board honors all First Nations Inuits and Nauti people and their valuable past and present contributions to this land. We are currently broadcasting on Zoom and live streaming on YouTube. Given this meeting is being held electronically, I want to caution that there is a possibility of technical difficulties. Should we receive any disruptions, I would ask that everyone remain patient as we work to fix the issues and resume the meeting as soon as possible. We have set aside an hour for the public meeting. I would ask all panelists to do their best to be concise in either their questions or comments to ensure we can stay within our timelines. I will now proceed with the confirmation of the agenda. The police service has a late addition they wish to add for the board's consideration, and that is the approval of two special constable appointments for Carleton University. Since these appointments do not relate to the ongoing demonstrations, I do not have the delegated authority to approve them. I am looking to add this item to the agenda with the board's consent. Per our procedure bylaw, any matter which was not set forth in the notice calling the special meeting requires the consent recorded in the minutes of all members of the board present and voting. Does the board consent to the addition of our, of this agenda item? Carrie?
Consent.
Carrie.
Okay, thank you for that, so that the Ottawa Police Services Board confirmed the agenda for February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is the amended agenda confirmed?
Confirmed.
Current.
Declaration of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, item number one, briefing on Enhanced Integrated Command Center. On behalf of the Ottawa Police Services Board, I am announcing that today Chief Peter Slowly and the Ottawa Police Services Board reached a mutually agreeable separation, and as such, Chief Peter Slowly is no longer employed with the Ottawa Police Service. We thank Chief Slowly for his service to the city of Ottawa. As this is a labor relations matter, no further comment will be made. Deputy Chief Steve Bell will be the interim chief until further notice. The board is already at work to put in place a new command structure and will be appointing a new chief very soon. The board's priority is to ensure a plan is put in place to bring about a peaceful end to the occupation of our city. I'm sorry. As expeditiously as possible. The Integrated Command Center, which includes our RCMP and OC OPP partners, will continue to operate. The first item on the agenda today is a briefing on the Enhanced Integrated Command Center. I've asked the service to provide an update specifically on this new command center and how it will impact the services' resource requirements, command structure, and decision-making moving forward. I am happy to see the RCMP and the OPP at the table because frankly, the response to this crisis so far has been ineffective at bringing this occupation to an end and restoring peace and security in Ottawa. The OPS has been unable to adequately enforce our laws and our residents continue to be terrorized. It isn't good enough. Last week, the OPS sent a letter, a clear message to the occupiers to expect a strong police response to illegal activity. On the weekend, there were more street parties equipped with stages, big screens, and sound systems, hot tubs, and an outdoor gym were erected. Today, we have more trucks lined up on Parliament Hill than we had yesterday. Like other residents in Ottawa, I have watched in disbelief as this carnival of chaos has been allowed to continue. While I appreciate that resource constraints have been a big limitation, it's both puzzling and frustrating to the OP, that the OPS has been unable to do more with the current resources, and I know resources have been a huge issue. Interim Chief Bell, I would turn this over to you to introduce, and once the presentation is over, we will vote questions from board members. So over to you. Interim.
Thank you Chair Deans. It's been a challenging day for the board, it's been a challenging day for the service, and I'd like to start by thanking Chief Slowly for his service to the Ottawa Police Service and to the community. The unlawful occupation has been a tremendous stress on our community, everyone that lives in Ottawa, and has brought on unprecedented challenges to both the police service and the city as a whole. I know it's been tough, I know it continues to be tough, but I'm confident that we've reached the turning point. With the new resources that we've seen flowing in from our policing partners, the new tools that both province and federal government have put in place, and our new Integrated Command Center that you're going to hear more about today, I believe we now have the resources and partners to bring a safe end to this occupation. The Ottawa Police are ready, eager, to do what, what is our part with new leadership and stability from our command team. I'm confident that we can end this occupation. We look forward to continually working with the OPP and RCMP to restore law and order in the city of Ottawa. I'll now turn it over to Deputy Chief Trish Ferguson for an update on our current efforts.
Thank you, Interim Chief Bell. Good afternoon Chair, members of the board. I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update on the demonstration and some salient details today. As has been the case following every weekend to date, the number of demonstrators and vehicles in the downtown core has dissipated. The number of demonstrators was less than a hundred and fifty in the overnight hours, and the numbers of vehicles in the core has declined to approximately three hundred and sixty. This is down substantially from the beginning of the demonstration where there were over four thousand vehicles in the downtown core, and it is lower relative to all other periods of the demonstration as well. The overall footprint of the demonstration remains more or less the same, though a small number of trucks have been relocated from residential areas of the downtown core to Wellington Street in front of Parliament. This was an outcome of negotiations that occurred between the mayor and some of the demonstrators, and it is hoped that this outcome will help to limit negative impacts being faced by the downtown residents. As of this morning, there are one hundred and seventy-two active criminal investigations. We have laid thirty-three charges and made eighteen arrests, and with bylaws help, we have handed out nearly three thousand tickets. We appreciate that the community wants us to increase our enforcement actions, though as we have said from the beginning, we are managing security and safety throughout. What this means is that we're not always in a position to lay a charge or ticket on an individual due to a specific security or safety concern at the time. It doesn't mean it cannot be done at a later stage by different means of service. We continue to actively collect evidence, information, and intelligence, and will be working with our municipal, provincial, and federal partners in ensuring that there are consequences in the days, weeks, and months ahead. Realistically, this means that our many investigative teams will be doing months of follow-up work with investigation in order to lay charges when warranted, regardless of where an individual resides. On the issue of the Incident Command Center, as has widely been reported, the OPS, the OPP, and the RCMP have moved to stand up the Incident Command Center. This center, led by the Ottawa Police, will allow us to leverage a proven and structured framework when conducting our operations, required given the complexities and intricacies of the continuing situation. The ICC will allow for the oversight and coordination of planning and logistical supports and experts who continue to arrive from across the country. These experts carry with them a great level of knowledge and experience in responding to such protracted demonstrations, and will be critical to intentional, scaled, intelligence-informed actions as we move forward. In all cases, and all actions and decisions taken will be measured, made in consideration of all possible factors and outcomes, regularly evaluated for positive and negative impacts, and adjusted as needed. Finally, the ICC will aid in providing of strategic communications to all parties, including members of the public, the media, and our policing partners. As for the enforcement of recent orders, during the last few days, a number of emergency orders and actions have been taken at the local, provincial, and federal levels. These orders are helpful, we welcome them, but must be fully understood prior to application to ensure that they can be used effectively and as intended. In the case of the federal invocation of the Emergencies Act, we continue to await for official details before operationalizing it. We have been working with our legal team and those of our provincial and federal partners to understand the implications of the various orders and actions, and consider the impacts on our ultimate mission. This work has been continuing during a time of high fluidity, and so we have taken the necessary time to understand additional powers in the current context and communicate this to our members. That said, we certainly have more tools in our toolbox today than we did when this demonstration started. And we will look at how we can best address them and use them to deal with public safety and security concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. We'll start with questions from Member Norman.
I thank you Chair. So Acting Chief Bell, you have been part of the command team during the current crisis which is ongoing. So I have a few questions, and I hope I can, you can enlighten me on that. So we are on the nineteen days into this illegal occupation. Do you think the residents of Ottawa are currently being provided with adequate and effective police services?
Thank you for your question, Member Norman. So from a legislative requirement or responsibility, absolutely, I do believe that we are providing adequate and effective policing, and I think based on the communication and partnerships we have with the OPP and the RCMP, we are increasing and improving our police service provision on a day-by-day basis. The geography of the occupation has shrunk over the last number of days. We continue to work on ensuring safety and security within the neighborhoods because it is the neighboring residents who have been most impacted detrimentally through lack of feelings of safety and security within where they live that we've really been focused on. So for the last two weeks, we've absolutely been focused on putting resources into those neighborhoods while we continue to work with the illegal occupiers to leave our city. The, the assistance we've been provided by the RCMP and the OPP has been absolutely invaluable in helping us to develop and deliver a plan that you heard at a high level, Deputy Chief Ferguson layout, so that we can engage with the communities around the occupied area to ensure increased safety and security, and continue to work and work with the occupiers to ultimately have them leave the city.
Thank you, thank you Deputy Bell. My next question is, our residents, our Ottawa residents, who have given on the police are now taking to the streets in large groups to confront and expel our illegal occupiers. Do you see this type of action as an indicator of a failure to provide adequate and effective police services?
And so I, we've said, I've said from the beginning, we've said from the beginning, I absolutely have an immense amount of compassion for the mem, for the members of our community who are so detrimentally affected by this occupation. We've called on people to not engage in counter demonstrations, not because we don't have sympathy with them for what is occurring in and around them, but because we're worried about safety concerns. We continue, we continue to call for people to be not engaged in counter protests while we apply our resources to remove the occupiers from our city streets. So although I deeply feel for the strain and stress that has been placed on our city's residents, they need to know that we are working with our, in ourselves and with our partners to put a timely and effective end to this.
Thank you. My next follow-up is, is there a current plan to bring an end to this illegal occupation? I'm not asking what the plan is, only asking whether a plan exists, and if so, did OPP and RCMP contribute to that plan? And have they agreed to your plan of action since OPS is, is a lead agency on that?
So thank you for the question. And you're quite right in stating that we can't provide any plan that we would be engaged in. What I can let you know is, and I'd like to thank Commissioner Lucky and Commissioner Kuree, they've sent some of their best people who have been involved in this type of incident in other jurisdictions to Ottawa to support our teams in developing the plan. I can absolutely assure you that we do have a plan to, to end this illegal occupation in our streets, and we continue to work with them to finalize resource and implement that plan and remove the illegal activities from the city.
Thank you Deputy, and my final, final concern, during the first emergency board meeting, which was held on February the fifth, I asked former Chief Slowly, yourself, and the planning, Acting Deputy Trish Ferguson about the blockades and highlighted the decision of the Supreme Court of Canada in Clayton case. We discussed at length the powers of the police in common law for putting the blockades and was, and I also further asked whether there was any planning or intelligence failure on the part of the OPS. Now, after the convoy provided advance notice to the, of their intentions, why were occupiers permitted to gain access to the downtown, downtown core? And specifically on day three of this convoy, the OPS said that they had no right to put up the roadblocks to restrict movements of convoy into the city. Do you stand by that view? Do you now agree that the police do have the power to put the roadblocks in place where appropriate?
And five, so, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Member Norman, finish the question though.
And the final is, do you have an explanation why, for how, why and how you did not know that at the start of the convoy, especially on day three?
So thank you for the question, and my apologies again for, for intervening in it. So as we outlined in the previous board meetings, we, we have approached, we approached this demonstration in the early days based on the intelligence that we were receiving and based on the history and unfolding of prior demonstrations that we'd seen within our downtown core. Although the, we completely support, and I know that there's been a, a motion made at council to ensure that there's a review done on this, we will actively participate in that to look at lessons learned and how we can refine how something like this would unfold in the future. We continue to work with our legal experts, we continue to work with our Crown Attorney's Office to exercise absolutely every lawful authority we have to end this occupation. As we go through it, we, there's lessons to be learned. There is, there is no doubt in my mind. We will learn those lessons, but I would like to focus on those once we have these illegal demonstrators out of our streets, off of, out of our city, and our residents own their city again.
Thank you. Just follow up, I just want to know, do, do you agree that the police have the powers to put the roadblocks in place where appropriate? Even at the commencement of the convoy in the middle, and even now, do you agree with me, with your position or not?
So Member Norman, as, as I indicated, we will continue to use every lawful method that we have in order to remove the demonstrators from our streets. What we did on the first days and what we would do, what we can do now, we will use our legal authorities to make sure that we don't allow more people to enter our downtown core and that we remove them as expeditiously and quickly and safely as possible.
Thank you, thank you Chair, those were my questions.
Thank you, Member Norman, Member Suede.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to say that I'm saddened to hear about Chief Slowly, and I want to thank him from the bottom of my heart for all this service to the city. Acting Chief Bell, from the beginning, there's been a lack of resources and manpower. Is anything changing now? Do we have more resources coming? And if so, when and how many?
So thank you very much for the question. I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Ferguson to talk about the resources that are coming in, but I'll, I'll again reiterate, the support that we've gotten from the RCMP and the OPP that has been continually building over the last week has been invaluable enough to get to a position where we are right now, where we believe we're at a turning point in this demonstration. So I will turn it over to Deputy Chief Ferguson to outline some of the resources that we've received and some of the planning that we've been engaged in.
Thank you, and thank you Member Suede for the question. As you know, the ask was put out about a week ago now for up to eighteen hundred members from across a number of services, and we have received incredible demand or incredible response from our demand. And, and I will say, echo Deputy Bell's comments about the fact that, you know, the OPP and the RCMP have provided a wonderful amount of people, and, and not just numbers, but skills that we were lacking or that we needed to round out our team to make it as, as strong as possible, and I, I feel we are there now. We had provided them with three different levels of staffing that we were hoping to achieve, one of them being just strictly for maintenance, the other was to be able to improve our posture and actually target some of the, the, the activities that we spoke about in our surge and contain. And then the final one was for, you know, what we would have as a, you know, an action scenario. So three different layers of, of staff, and I think we are confident now and in this Integrated Command Center, able to determine what level of staffing we need for each of those things.
Okay, so I mean, at one point, I know the province was suggesting, I think they were mentioning fifteen hundred resources. Do we actually have those right now? Okay, is fifteen hundred here, or is it a percentage of that fifteen hundred?
So it's a bit of a complicated factor because we're, we're talking about twenty-four hour coverage, so, and we need to make sure that people are rotated through and have rest. So there are times when it's scaled up, on the weekends, we have asked to have, you know, an increased number of staff, and, and we choose days carefully to make sure that folks are getting the rest that they need to be able to maintain our, our level and increase where we can. So I, I know it's not a hard and fast, exact number for you right now, but it's also not not a wise thing to provide exact numbers when we're talking about posture for security and safety. Suffice to say that we have had a very satisfactory and, and good response to our ask.
Yeah, so, and what, what I'll, what I'll add to that is, is where Trish left off. What we've seen over the past week is a steady and increasing transfer and, and application of resources by both the RCMP and the OPP to our efforts in the city. We're very happy with, with the results that we have in terms of our call for resources, called by the board, Chair Deans, and City Council to have more resources available to us, and the reception of that. So again, I can't thank Commissioner Lucky and Commissioner Kuree enough for not only the expertise that they've helped provide us, but the resources in terms of, of sworn members that they are, have provided us and continue to indicate they will increase over the days ahead.
Okay, and also I want to thank you as well, Acting Chief, for stepping up and, and filling the role. I know it's been tough on everybody. And just one more question, maybe this is to a CEO dunker. Are we still okay with our financial resources that have been promised, promised by the other levels of government?
We're certainly tracking everything we're spending related to this occupation. We expect invoices from the OPP and the municipality, and we will sort out the cost recovery mechanisms as we move along because we're in, you know, pretty early days of this from a financial recovery perspective, and we believe that we won't receive invoices from the RCMP. And we are working with the federal government currently on the grant. We already have, I think, the board is aware of the grant line that was associated with special events that we get annually. So there's already that conversation going on in terms of recovering additional funding through that process. So as I mentioned, it's early days, but we are tracking every cost, and we will bring that as part of our, our update, our financial update back to the board. I believe it's in March or April.
And finally, do we have a, an average cost per day, an estimate of what it's costing us?
Yes, so I have, as of yesterday, the total cost that we had tracked, and it's important to note that these are recorded costs, so not all overtime, for example, would be yet recorded, and other items would be coming trickling in. So we're at fourteen point one, three oh, three, five, three, nine billion, so fourteen point one million. That does not include the RCMP costs if they were to invoice us, so that's for the OPS cost plus forecasted costs for the OPP and municipalities and all OPS costs. So that works out to about seven hundred and eighty-five thousand per day, and as additional officers join, those costs will be going up. So that was what we tallied as of yesterday.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you Chair.
Thank you, Member Suede. Interim Chief Bell, I just, I think we should clarify in terms of the resources that I mean, we're pretty happy with how they're flowing into Ottawa now and that more are coming, and it's making a huge difference, but I don't want to leave the impression that after we made that ask last Sunday or Monday, whenever it was, that those resources came in the way we expected because they were very slow. And I, I think we just have to be very clear with the public that, that we're, we're doing really well now, and we can see that we're at a turning point, but that was not initially the case. So if you could just confirm that.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Chair Deans. Absolutely. We made the ask about a week ago, and it's taken time through planning and resourcing to actually get those boots on the ground in Ottawa. We are not at the eighteen hundred number yet. We haven't seen that realized, but we continue to work with our partners in the OPP and the RCMP to make that a real fact in our city. So what we have seen is an increase, a steady flow of bodies into our operation that are deployable, but it was not immediate as you indicated.
And would it be fair to say that the escalation of resources into this community for assistance with this occupation came about at the same time as the Integrated Command new structure was put in place?
So I, I think it's, it's fair to say that the Integrated Command center that we've established with the OPP and the RCMP has been of great benefit for us to track the resources we have, allocate the resources that we need and bring them into the city. I don't, I don't think it is because of that, but what it has done is has added capabilities to the operation for us to be able to bring resources in, properly deploy them towards efforts that we are undertaking to end the occupation.
Thank you for that, Interim Chief Bell. Member Meehan.
Thank you Chair, and thank you Deputy Chief. I guess the question is, I think for a lot of folks in the city who are really beside themselves, what's going to change now? When are we going to see action? And I don't expect you to give us a detailed schedule, but when can we expect those rigs and the pickup trucks and some of the paraphernalia that are downtown? When can we expect, expect that to be? Action to begin to be, to move that out?
So it's, as I, as I indicated early on, we, we won't lay out our operational plans in a public forum. We will brief the board, as is our responsibility, and in an in-game session at the appropriate time. What I can tell you is, there is absolutely a plan that has been developed through our partners with the OPP and RCMP to have an integrated approach and response to ultimately end the occupation in our streets. So that plan continues to be refined and developed and exists, and when is the appropriate time? We will brief the board on the execution of that plan.
Okay, we saw in Windsor, when the Emergencies Act was announced by the Premier, the authorities down at the bridge, like, sent out flyers to all the, the people who are protesting and blockading the bridge, and it laid out the penalties that were going to be, you know, needed out if the protesters did not leave, and that, that information, I think, did a lot, did a good job of informing people and encouraging them to leave. Are we going to prepare something similar here? Because we know that a lot of the people who are occupying are getting information, not necessarily from mainstream media. They don't know exactly if in fact, the, the, the federal measures that we're, we're going to bring in, they don't know about what that actually means. They don't know about the Emergencies Act. they don't know about what that actually means, they don't know about the Emergencies Act. Will we have a flyer that's going to go out to everybody to spell out? You could lose your rig, you could lose the insurance on your rig, you could ultimately, you you may not get a mortgage if you, you know, if you stay here. Will we be doing something similar to that, so they know exactly what they're facing if they remain here?
So what what I can let you know, and I'll turn it over to Trish Ferguson to top up on anything that she wants to once I'm finished. What I can let you know is from day one of the occupation, we've let people know jeopardy that they have around this. We've gathered information around who is here, so that at the end, ultimate end of this, we can actually apply jeopardy. There can be penalties associated with the illegal occupation in our streets. We continue to work, the the commanders that worked with the OPP and the RCMP in Windsor, we have access to and we continue to rely on in order to build and develop our plan. We've been clear with the protesters through communit- verbal communications, through Twitter, through mainstream media, through all of our communication channels. You cannot be in our streets, you shall, you need to leave our streets. We will continue to escalate that, that discussion, and the ultimate enforcement of those directions until they are gone from our streets.
Okay, we're going into Family Day weekend here. The Rito Centre's been closed for two weeks. People have been, you know, you know, forced to stay in their homes. There's going to be a lot of people want to go downtown. I I'm wondering, like, is there, is there a plan to tackle some of the the blockades that are keeping the Rito Centre from opening? I know that there's, I guess, about thirty vehicles at Rito and Sussex. If that, you know, that occupation was moved out, then perhaps the Rito Centre could actually open. Is there, are you looking at prioritizing, I guess, some of the areas that are impeding, you know, businesses and people from from accessing their their places of work and business?
So we we continue to to understand the pressures that all of the blockades cause on our downtown core and the extreme challenges it is creating for our residents, the safety concerns, the security concerns within their neighborhoods. We know there are some pressure points like Rito and Sussex, and we continue to to talk to the demonstrators there, have discussions to negotiate their way from that area, ultimately out of the city, that will ultimately end in us intervening with the removal of them from our streets. We continue to work on that, and as I indicated before, as part of the operational plan, we will brief the board in camera on how we plan to move ahead when when that time is correct.
Okay, I I I appreciate that. Do you have a timetable? You know, off the record, or, you know?
So here's one of the challenges. We're not, we're not off the record here.
But I mean, just say yes or no. Is there a timetable?
We have an absolute plan on how we wish to move ahead to end the occupation of our streets.
Okay, back in twenty fourteen, when we had the terrorist attack on Parliament Hill, we saw a surge of Mounties come in to reinforce the parliamentary precinct. Is there any plan like that in the works this time?
So we, as as I've indicated a couple of times, that we continue to work with our RCMP and OPP partners. As Chair Deans rightfully pointed out, we saw a trickle of resources come in in the early days. We're increasingly seeing our access to resources grow over the over the days as we engage in the integrated planning in our Integrated Command Centre. There is nothing that that I've been told, nothing that leads me to believe that we don't have everything but absolute coordination and cooperation with both the RCMP and the OPP to release resources for us to get these people out of our streets.
Okay, I I know that you answered the question about resources, but the former chief asked for eighteen hundred bodies to come in. Are we anywhere close to that? Are we getting close to that? Is that still the target?
So as Deputy Ferguson indicated, we don't, we we're not going to release a number, operational numbers for safety concern and for operational concerns. That that's a standard practice for us and and makes even more sense in circumstances like we are currently in. What I can tell you is we continue to to receive resources. There is unified reporting on the number of resources that we have that is sent to our command team, to the OPP and the RCMP executive, so that everyone has line of sight on the resources that are in our city from all of the different jurisdictions. We continue to see a day-over-day increase in those, and as we finalize plans, we will continue to see that grow over the coming days.
Deputy Chief, thank you. That that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Member Man, and I think some of what you're hearing here is the real desire of this board to hear more details of a plan than obviously you can share in public. But I would ask for an in-camera briefing of that plan because we need to be very satisfied where we're going at this point on this plan. So we can work that out, Interim Chief Bell, and we'll move to Members Smallwood.
Thank you, Chair, and I wanted to join my fellow board members in firstly thanking Former Chief Slowly for his efforts. He's been through some really horrendous times, COVID and and this occupation have been extraordinarily challenging. We've never seen times like this in the city before, so I really wanted to do say thank you. It's been, it's been tough. And I also wanted to thank those who've stepped forward, you know, Acting Chief Bell and Deputy Trish Ferguson and the entire command team and the members because I think we'll look back on this, and I've said to many people, you'll put this on your CV. All of us will put it on our CV. This is, they will teach courses about this, they will talk about this for a very long time to come. And and everybody is second guessing why somebody didn't do something. And and what I can say for sure is, is it certainly isn't because I've never seen anybody who doesn't have their entire body geared towards making that, get a solution, get a resolution to this. We all really, really, really want to do that. And I think you've seen some of the questions from the board members. There's a, there's a saying for board members that our job is nose in and fingers out. We can ask questions, but we can't tell you what to do. And we also, we can't expect you, because all we can do is ask about operational matters, but we can't expect you to tell us certain things, and we can't direct you how to do them. So we do appreciate that, and but that, as you've seen, that doesn't stop us from asking the questions. And and I think it's helpful for the public to see, even though sometimes we know you're not going to be able to answer it. At least we do our best to try to 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 dig away at it to see what we can find out. I did have one question, which I don't think is operational, but I just, Deputy Chief Ferguson, you mentioned that there was three hundred and sixty, I think you mentioned, I'm not sure, I wrote it down, three hundred and sixty vehicles and a hundred and fifty people downtown currently. Did I get that wrong?
So the figure was three hundred and sixty vehicles, and in the overnight hours, there were one hundred and fifty people, protesters on the streets. So that's how we measure. We check to see how many people are on Parliament Hill, how many in the streets surrounding, and obviously that's a very fluid number, and then how many vehicles?
Because I just, I was wondering if there were more vehicles than people, but I'm assuming then that there are actually three hundred and sixty vehicles, perhaps with people, with or without people in them, and the overflow people are in the streets. And I noticed that. Now, one thing I wanted to confirm is just that when a vehicle, when a, when a member of the convoy leaves, now I realize there's, this is some question, some part of it you won't be able to answer, but I realize there's some negotiations that happen. But in general, when a convoy member leaves, they're not allowed to come back, like, we're we're not, like, they don't have some sort of pass that says you can come park here for whenever you want. Like, I I'm kind of assuming that if somebody were to leave, that that we don't allow someone else to come. So the only movement that we've seen about vehicles was, I guess, an arrangement that X number of vehicles are on residential streets would be allowed to move up to Wellington and the S Jam Parkway to get them out of the residential area. Would that be correct?
I apologize, just had somebody come into my office.
You mean, you mean there's something going, there's something going on? I can answer the question. So absolutely, there there is no right of return or in-and-out pass for people in in the area. We are actively working every minute of every day to limit the number of people within the footprint. And when we either negotiate them to leave, or they do leave on their own accord, they are not allowed back, and there is no one that is allowed to come in and fill their space. And we've seen, we've seen success in that over the the last number of days. The numbers that we're reporting today are the smallest number of of vehicles within the red zone footprint that we've had since the beginning of the occupation. We have more work to do, absolutely committed to do it, but we are seeing a decrease in numbers.
So I really appreciate that, because I think what the public wants to know, and I appreciate you can't tell us when are they all going to be gone, but I think what the public wants to know is every day, it's getting better. There is hope, it is getting better, there are fewer, and I know I've been down there on many days, and before it was just shocking, the the diesel in the air, I mean, it was sickening and the and the tension that was in the air. So I'm really, really happy to see, and I really do appreciate the work and efforts of all the people involved in this. So thank you very much, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Member Small, Member Smallwood, Member King.
Thank you, Chair. Under Section four point one of the Police Services Act, the municipality must provide adequate and effective policing concerning public order maintenance and emergency response. With all due respect, I have found the provisions of these services over the past three weeks to be wholly inadequate and ineffective. So interim chief, on behalf of the residents of Ottawa, can you explain the inadequacy of the law enforcement efforts that we've seen during this siege?
So we've, we've had multiple discussions in this forum about the challenges that we were seeing in this unprecedented demonstration in our city, and not only in our city, but in other jurisdictions across Ontario and across Canada. So the plans that we put in place are exactly that, to create public order and to make sure that our members of our community feel safe and secure in the city in which they live. We continue to build capacities through our partnership with the OPP and RCMP to have the capacity to take our streets back. We have absolutely developed the capacities and have developed the plan to actually go into and execute and affect that return of our streets. So when you ask about adequate and effective policing, I did answer that question earlier. I do believe that we have provided adequate and effective policing, and we will continue to support and the the community's need to feel safety and security in the place they live while we remove these unlawful and illegal demonstrators from our streets.
Well, interim chief, I would beg to differ with you, and I'm certain many residents would also beg to differ on that. We've seen, you know, a scenario where the lack of police action has been inexplicable for many of our residents. We've seen the idling trucks, we've seen the idling generators, we've seen the assembly of jumbo jumbotrons, bouncy castles, barbecues. Most dangerously, we've seen fuel dumps full of gas, diesel and propane canisters. People are being harassed in the streets, they can't go into stores, they're unable to enjoy any semblance of a normal life. Supply encampments remain in operation, and residents have now taken on the dangerous work of enforcement and resistance in their own hands. So I have to say that I don't see that that effective and adequate policing here. You know, we've heard from others, including the Minister of Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness, who is a former Toronto Police Chief, who has also said the lack of police action has been inexplicable. And I'm saying, as a member of the Police Services Board, that the lack of police action has been inexplicable. So interim chief, even if there has been inadequate resources to address this crisis, why haven't there been the basic probative enforcement exercises to address the most blatant violations of the law? You know, maybe en masse, it's going to take time to to deal with the situation, but there've been many situations, many instances where action could have been taken. So I'm just wondering, why weren't actions taken? As example, you know, we see the corner of Rito and Sussex, we see the the War Memorial. Why haven't specific actions been taken in 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 terms of those incidents?
So what I'll start with is, there's already been committed to a review of what led up to the point that we are at today around this demonstration. We welcome that. What I can see, what I can sit here and commit to you is a substantive plan forward, actions forward to end the demonstration within our city. We know that over the past number of weeks, several of, if not all of, those safety concerns that you've identified have existed within our streets. They have been completely unacceptable. We have, from the early days, identified that we needed the resources to be able to access to safely stop these demonstrations in our city. The board, through Chair Deans, the council, through the mayor, have actually advocated for us to receive those resources. And in those resources, in turn, we've been able to bring in partners from the OPP and RCMP to work collaboratively together to to build a substantive, definite plan that is properly and adequately resourced to ultimately end this occupation. We will continue to work towards that plan to end the occupation in our streets, so that we see no more of those unsafe activities.
Well, with the new integrated coordination amongst agencies, if there has been an accelerated tempo of incoming resources, when will we see an accelerated level of enforcement in order to address the illegal occupation?
So I think over the past number of days, you've already seen an an increase in the enforcement activities of our members in a more coordinated and strategic way that is directed towards ending the occupation. As we continue to roll out the plan to end the occupation, you will see an ongoing increase in that.
And will the integrated response of multiple law enforcement agencies be driven by a specific plan? And when will that plan be put into place?
So again, as is the responsibility of myself as interim chief, I will brief the board on that plan, that operational plan as we roll it out in in the time that is required to me prior to doing that. That will need to be done in camera, because I would not want to actually provide operational comments in an open public forum about ongoing or future police operations.
Thank you for that. Notwithstanding misinformation and disinformation that is floating around the the entire ecosystem, are you aware of any complicity by sworn members with illegal occupiers?
So misinformation and disinformation is, has been a challenge and and a threat to this entire operation as we've worked through it. That being said, what I can clearly state now is there any, any information that we have received that there could be complicity by any of our members or anybody associated to this police service, we are actively investigating it to come to a a resolution or come to a culmination in terms of discipline that would be associated with that. As the interim chief, I could tell you, anybody that is supporting this demonstration has no place in this police service and will be dealt with accordingly.
In interim chief, have there been any illegal occupiers who have been charged with unlawful assembly as defined in Section sixty-three of the Criminal Code?
To this, to this point, no, there has been no, none of the occupiers who have been charged with that specific legislation, but there have been several members that have been charged with other criminal code violations.
And I have some more focus-pointed questions here about what legal advice led OPS to allow trucks to move freely outside of the designated city truck routes? As we know, a member near Min had pointed out, R versus Clayton and Brown versus Durham region, which clearly states that there is authority for police services to restrict vehicular access into and within the city. So I want to know, you know, what legal advice was provided to do that and what decision? And uh, what decision is going to be made in the future to to actually. Um, ensure that uh, this authority is applied. Uh, because it's obvious that uh, roadblocks can be uh, utilized in in this scenario.
Uh, so what I can let you know again is, we, we absolutely encourage and will support. All reviews of the actions that have been taken up to this point. Um, so that we can learn from what what mistakes may have been made. Or what laws we need to advocate to have tightened, sharpened, or changed moving ahead to avoid a situation like this. From a forward look, we are continuing to work with um, our partners in the Integrated Command Center. Uh, as well as legal experts to look at what lawful means we can use to. Keep people from attending the downtown court to add to the numbers of the demonstration. And lawfully and expeditiously remove the uh, unlawful occupiers that are in our streets today.
When was the demonstrated demonstration uh, now only illegal occupation declared illegal? And if so, when did this take place?
So you're gonna have to, uh, I'm gonna ask you to re- refine your question. I don't, I don't understand exactly what you're seeking.
So this went uh, to perceivably being a protest to an illegal occupation. Uh, was the demonstration declared illegal? And if so, when did this take place?
So I'll, I'll have to get you the specific point at which we changed our, our view on it from a protest to an illegal occupation. I, I just don't have that right.
Okay, um, an additional uh, question would be, when was the first request to the federal and provincial governments for resources? When did that take place? And on what date? And you might have to get back to me on that as well.
Yeah, so again, again, I'll, I'll have to get that specific date when official requests were made. I can tell you that uh, specifically around the OPP, there was resource uh, supports that were given to us in the very early days. And it shortly after that, resource uh, supports that were provided by the RCMP. They have been partners with us through the very early days of this illegal occupation. But I will have to get and review our documentation to see when the first official requests were made to the federal and provincial government.
And what were the enforcement tactics once the situation did alter from a protest to to an occupation?
So again, we, that, that will be encompassed in the review that were occur, that will occur immediately after this. We, we, we will fully cooperate and support that review that was called for by city council. So that we can look at steps and stages as to when different mechanisms and levers were pulled. To both see how we could have been better and see how we would change our practices and tactics moving ahead to never have this occur.
And has any ultimatum ever been given to the occupiers? Have we issued any notices to them um, about the illegal activity that they've been engaged in? And if we did, what were their consequences?
Um, so I would start with the notice. There isn't a time that I've come before this board that I've become before council or before media. That we haven't stated that this is an illegal, illegal occupation of our streets and these people need to leave. Um, the, the support of that and the enforcement of that is what is centered around. That plan that's being developed and implemented by our integrated team. So there, there has been no doubt that these people are involved in an illegal occupation of our streets. Through the support of this board, through the support of council, we are now seeing. The relief that we need through resource supports, planning supports, in order to be able to bring it finally to an end.
Well, I will just leave us with this final thought, uh, that we've heard very clearly from the residents of Ottawa. And that uh, is mirrored by um, council, and I'm sure uh, this body, this board. We need a more proactive response, resources, and most importantly. Um, enforcement effort to really end this illegal occupation. That's what we need, and we need a, a very clear timeline, we need a plan. And we need to present that relatively quickly, as quickly as possible. Uh, to uh, the residents of Ottawa, so that we can get to a resolution of of this situation. Uh, that rightfully has uh, really, um. Really is undermining um, trust in our public institutions. That's undermining a trust in everything that is occurring in the city. And is erasing the idea of normalcy in the city. We need to bring this city back to normal. And we'll continue to advocate for that and ask those questions, uh, because this is not acceptable. And people out there, and I agree with them, do not consider this um, adequate and effective policing. They want to see that restored and they want to see uh, results. And so we'll continue to ask those questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, um, Member King, um, Member Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll just add to Counselor King's comments. I too want to see our city back, our residents with their lives back as soon as possible. I would like to thank uh, Past Chief Slowly for his work and leadership during a very challenging time. May I also thank you, Acting Chief Bell. The other members of the command team and all of the OPS members for, for all that you have done. And will be doing to end this occupation. And I was glad to hear that you, as Acting Chief, have shared that there is a plan. And that we will receive that at an in-camera meeting. Can I expect that meeting in the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours?
So, um, first of all, thanks for your comments, um, Member Johnson. We, we will be briefing the board on the plan, um, at the, at the most appropriate time prior to the commencement of it. I can't indicate when that would be, because that would be part of the operations that we would be engaging in.
Thank you. In terms of the Incident Command Center that's been set up. Have all three levels of government been updated on the Incident Command Center? And has the decision-making process at the leadership level been reviewed and agreed upon? By the OPP, the RCMP, and the OPS?
So, um, Deputy Chief Ferguson has been actively engaged in developing and building that Incident Command Center, so I'll turn that question over to her.
Thank you, uh, Member Johnson, for the question. Um, I can tell you that as we are doing now and have throughout this process. Um, we, they are updating their um, boards and their um supervisors. So the both commissioners have been uh, on daily calls with updates with their members. Um, and I, I think it suffice to say that all levels of government are aware. Uh, that the plan, that there is a plan and that they have been contributing to it.
Okay, and then my other question was, has the decision-making process at the leadership level been agreed and. Upon by the three different groups, the OPP, the RCMP, and OPS?
Yes, they have. Sorry, I omitted to answering that.
Okay.
I- in the, in the command structure, there are levels across the board uh, at which decisions are made. Operational decisions are made, and it is the people who have the best line of sight, so not necessarily the commissioner. The chief or the um, commissioner of the RCMP who would be making those decisions, but they would be advised of them. Uh, and they provide strategic direction to them. So that is happening.
Okay, thank you. And then Acting Chief Bell, what resources are still needed? Uh, in your estimation, uh, to end the Ottawa siege? Are you able to identify what you still need?
Um, so again, based on the need to um, not disclose all of our operational tactics in in a public forum. What I can tell you is, um, the resources that we are requiring to implement and execute on this plan. Are being uh, coordinated and arranged through our Incident Command Center. There will be more and different resources that we'll need, that I won't go into specific details on what they are in in a public forum. But they are being uh, identified and arranged to be accessed.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to see the communications improved on the actions being taken. And so I repeat, on the actions being taken to resolve this occupation. Acting Chief Bell, I request you to update the board, the board on a twice daily basis. Until this crisis is resolved. Can you confirm that, please, that you'll do that?
Maybe I'm gonna step in here. I, we're in the middle of a crisis. I, I, I really don't. Feel comfortable as the Chair of this board asking Deputy Chief Bell, uh, or interim, actually, sorry. Interim Chief Bell to um, update the board twice a day. We have a process in place that this board has agreed to, and we will commit to doing that.
Um, may I just clarify, uh, Chair, uh, the process that we've agreed to, um. To make sure I'm, I'm clear on that. Thank you.
We have agreed to, any questions that the board members have will be uh, bundled through the board office. And forwarded to the interim chief. We will have at least a once a week uh, meeting. And if there are changes that we need to consider in a um, more fluid manner, then I will call a, um, a special meeting.
Yeah, um, I, you know, I, I, I do think, given. That what I'm hearing from Ottawa residents that I've been speaking to, from the healthcare providers I've been speaking. Uh, to that they're looking for more action from the board. So, um. Given we're hearing that and how critical it is. I, I ask again, that the board be updated by Acting Chief Bell. These do not have to be long updates. If it's the following two actions I've been taking, that's fine. Um, but I do request that the board receive these updates. And I think that we're hearing from Ottawa, and I'm seeing on Twitter. That they want more from the board, and I want to do more, and I want to show more oversight. So I, uh, I again, like my request to acting, and I s- to Acting Chief Bell.
Um, so, um, Member Johnson, I, I, I have to support or I will support. Um, what Chair Deans has indicated here. Um, I absolutely agree. There isn't a person. In, on this board, in this building, that isn't looking to quickly, effectively, safely. Resolve this occupation and get these people out of our streets. That is all we are working towards. We have, through our Integrated Command Center, increased our communications. Uh, looked at how we have better, more refined messages on the actions that are being taken. But what I can tell you is, when, when we attend, and I, and I think it's important under the framework that's been set up through the board. When we attend meetings like this, it takes us away from operationally responding to the issue that's in front of us. And at the end of the day, the most important thing we're gonna do is operationally respond to this and get these people out of our streets. So although I, I absolutely support having the most seamless communication we can with the board. To provide them updates, I can tell you the twice daily briefings would be extremely taxing. And would be very difficult to manage and would absolutely take us away from an operational response.
Can you see a level more than once a week that could, uh, you know, satisfy that the board is doing the oversight? That Ottawa wants us to do. Can you see something, uh, something different or something more than that?
So I'm, I'm absolutely willing to work with the board to, to look at an enhanced uh, communications process. If that's what the board desires through Chair Deans, um, we can look at how we can support that. But what I would ask is that we don't have more in-person meetings where we take the entire command structure away from responding to the incident.
Right, okay, okay. Uh, that's helpful, actually. Um, yeah, so, uh, all right. And, um, that, that's all of my questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Johnson. Um, and just before I start my comments, I, I just want to say that. You know, um, as much as we want to provide that oversight role and we are expected to. I don't want to create the false impression with the public that this board has more authority in this than we have. That has been a problem already with the public, who happen to believe that the board can direct these operations. And should be directing these operations. And I can tell you, I have an inbox full of people giving me advice. That under the act, under the Police Services Act, we cannot do. So I, I just, I, I want to caution the board not to create the impression. At all with the public that ours is more than an oversight role. It's an oversight role. We have to make sure that we have of. The, the resources that they need. We have to make sure they have a plan. We have to ask those questions. But we cannot direct the chief, and I don't want to leave the impression with the public we can, because that is not the case. And I, I, like all of you, and like every single person I'm sure in the city, wants to see an expeditious and peaceful. Safe end to this occupation where no one is harmed. We all want the same thing. I want it as much as anybody else, believe me. We have to put a structure in place that we believe will get this job done as expeditiously as possible. And I guess Chief Bell, like, you know, I, I, we're, we're all getting to our breaking point, maybe I'm too. But, um, one of my frustrations has been when we expect action, we don't see it. It's a problem. We expected Coventry Road, we sort of got half the job done, and then there seemed to be a backing away. It took way too long in Confederation Park. This weekend, when we said that we were going to treat the protesters, you know, uh, more strongly than we have in the past. We had a chaotic carnival on Parliament Hill. I tell you, I wanted to go up there and pop that den hot tub myself. And unplug the bouncy castle. And I couldn't understand why we weren't doing just those things. That we're poking the fingers in the eye of our house, of, of Parliament, of our democracy, and of our city. And so, you know, if there's some frustration spilling over, it's, okay, now we're getting the resources. We, this board is working very hard behind the scenes, and I want to assure the public that that is true. To put a new structure in place that will bring about a peaceful end to this, to this o- illegal occupation as soon as possible. But I, I think what the public needs to hear today, what I, as the Chair of this board, need to hear today. Is that there is going to be stepped-up enforcement and that the disruptive, ridiculous. Annoying behavior that has persisted is going to be. Addressed in a meaningful and expeditious fashion. That's what we want to hear.
So Chair Deans, I, I, I share your frustration. I, I absolutely could not share your frustration, and it is the frustration and. And heartbreak of the residents that live in this city. We understand that. We work every single day to try and manage and remove these people in a peaceful way like you, like you indicated. Um, the structures that we have brought in, the dedication of our members and the members who are coming to our city. To actually remove these illegal occupiers will be what ultimately ends this. Um, you, you've heard Trish talk today, you've heard myself talk today. We have worked with partners from the RCMP and the OPP, who are experts in this. Who have dealt with similar, not to this scale, uh, but similar type occupations in their territory. To bring their best information, their best reasoning, and their depth of experience into our house, into our city. To come up with a plan that will ultimately remove these people from our streets. I believe we have, are working on and have almost finalized that plan. With that plan comes resourcing requests that you yourself have asked for, and we're seeing fulfilled as we move ahead. Everybody wants the same thing. These people need to leave. They are not welcome in our streets anymore. We are getting the resources, we have the plan and increasing our abilities to have them remove, go or removed from our streets. That is absolutely our intention. We hope, we continue to work with the demonstrators. Who have come here to have them leave our streets. We will continue to do that. We will continue to do that until every last one of them is gone.
Okay, and I do agree with you that having the RCMP and the OPP, having that level of knowledge, upper-tier police services that have probably dealt with more prooccupations of this scale than the Ottawa Police Services have in the past is critical. It's crucial. It's important. I think it can make a difference, but I need to see the difference. Interim Chief Bell, I need to see the difference that it makes and what, where our patience is wearing thin. We need everybody working as best they can to get this thing brought to a peaceful conclusion at the earliest possible time. And I can't emphasize that enough. Member Nerman.
Sorry, can I just one comment on that, Chair Deans? Absolutely could not agree more. We want as expeditiously as we can to get this occupation finalized. One thing I will say, though, is nobody across Canada has ever dealt with an occupation on this scope, scale, size with this type of equipment or vehicles in an area. This is unprecedented. We said this from the beginning. This has not been managed by any police service across Canada in the history of our country. We are continuing to work with them on their best experience to manage what is a new and unprecedented situation.
Just one more question. How much more complicated did this operation get with the addition of thirteen more trucks on Wellington Street last night?
So as we indicated, we continue to work to have a peaceful negotiated end to this. That was one of, one of the steps that was, was done between the city and the demonstrators. I won't comment on the operational components of it because I don't think that would help us in our, in executing our plan to ultimately end this.
Thank you, Member Nerman.
Thank you, Chair. Interim Chief Bill, sorry. Interim Chief Bell, I am building on Member King. And especially, you would recall that I had a discussion of Section sixty-three of the Criminal Code during our first special meeting. And after hearing that the Ottawa Police has not charged anybody, I have a follow-up question for you, please. Illegal occupiers are committing crimes, crimes that are turning residents' life and local businesses upside down without being arrested or even removed. The illegal occupiers have taken complete control of the downtown core, and I believe there is no doubt across the board, across the country on this. So, so Steve Bell, my question is, with those facts in mind, do you still believe that the public is receiving adequate and effective police services?
So, Member Nerman, I stand by my question from before. We are doing everything within our power, using all of our resources and looking to implement and execute on an integrated plan with the RCMP and the OPP to ultimately bring this occupation to an end.
I would say this was not, I was expecting a response, but that's fine. You have the floor. My follow-up question is, are you making or planning to make some intelligence and operational corrections from the past on a moving-forward basis?
So what I can, what I can let you know is, every day through this unprecedented occupation of our streets, we've gathered information, gathered intelligence, learned from our actions we've taken and look to refine them to have better response on a go-forward basis. Those have all been built in to the plan that we, we are continuing to work on, refine, develop, and finalize with the OPP and the RCMP.
Okay, thank you. And before I leave, I would like to place on record that thank you to all the OPS, OPP and RCMP frontline officers, including paramedics and the fire and the civilian employees who have been in service, including our former Chief Peter Slowly and yourself for stepping up and taking some hard questions from us. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Nerman. Member Meehan.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be pretty quick. Interim Chief, the, I think, I think Diane's emotions sort of set a lot of our emotions rolling as well. We didn't want to be overly emotional. We wanted to be very practical and get to the point of a lot of the plans. But I, I have to say, as a resident of the city, I, I believe, I firmly believe that the majority of the rank and file of our service are, are trying to do the best job they possibly can. But I am baffled and confused and really frustrated when I see videos and I hear anecdotes of officers who are yucking it up with some of the protesters and saying that they support the cause and often sometimes are assisting them in some of the illegal activities like moving cans around. Can you just explain to the residents of Ottawa why this is happening? And do those officers really realize the damage that they are doing to the, to the reputation of the Ottawa Police Service in this city? I realize that we're all, we have all different views. We come from, you know, we approach things differently. But when it comes to the police service, we expect them to uphold the rule of law and to protect and represent the citizens, not the illegal occupiers. Do they understand exactly what has happened here? And the long-term damage that's going to be done to the service because of this?
So I want to focus on the, the last part of that answer first. The vast, vast majority of the members of this police service are out there every single day trying to restore law and order to the community.
And that's what I said, and I agree.
I know, I know you did, but I think it's very important that it cannot be understated. They are out there working with partners from across the country and across the province, other municipalities, to try and restore law and order in this city. They are as frustrated and they are as passionate about ending this as every member of this board is, as every member of this community is. I don't think we can ever lump everyone together and not say that there, the vast, vast majority of our membership is working day and night to try and end this in the best, most lawful, most expeditious way that they can. For those that are not, there is no place in this police service. I have said that before, and I will say that again. Supporting illegal demonstrators, illegal occupiers in our streets is not part of our core values. You have my commitment and my word as Interim Chief that we will investigate every single one of those and, and to the fullest extent ensure that those people are not part of this police service.
I, I thank you on behalf of the citizens of this city for that because it has undermined the confidence that a lot of people have in the police service. And that, as a member of this board, distresses me because we know that the majority of the police service care deeply. But I just want to address a rumor that was going around, and that was that we were told just to, that the service members were told just to keep the peace and not to step in and not to take any risks at all. I, I think I asked the Chief that a couple of weeks ago, and he said that wasn't true. But is it, is it in fact, that is in fact the case? That's what's happened, right?
That is not, that is not what's happened, Member Meehan. The, the officers are given the authorities that they have to intervene within the demonstrators and given the guidance and discretion to intervene in a lawful and safe manner. We have to be considerate of officer safety with, with exactly the atmosphere the Chair Deans explained. There are pockets within this, and, and our officers have been involved in enforcement activities where they've been swarmed. So as, as we've asked for more resources and as we've been provided more numbers, we now have the ability to increase our enforcement activities to ultimately end it. There has been no complacency. There has been no direction given that members should not enforce the laws. There has also been instructions given that they have to do it within the bounds of officer safety.
Okay, now that I've gone this far, I'll just ask the other one to address the last rumor, and that is that several plans have been presented to the executive of the Ottawa Police Service. They were rejected. And the, we were told that because we did not have a plan, that's why we weren't offered the resources that we required earlier.
So what I can let you know.
Know that we should be dealing in rumors in this.
Just a yes or no, Chair, because it is out there and there is some concern.
What I can let you know is we have absolute support of our partners to, to develop and staff a plan to ultimately bring an end to the occupation. We continue to work on that. We continue to access staffing and resourcing to execute that plan.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Acting Chief. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I know we want to wrap up soon. I have a couple more questions, and I see Member King does, and then I think we're going to hold it there. Interim Chief Bell, you said in response to a question earlier that once a vehicle has left, it's not allowed to return. I have received several messages from members of the community saying that is not factually correct. So I'm wondering if you can at least assure us that going forward, no vehicle that leaves will be allowed to return.
We are working every, every day, Chair Deans, to shrink the footprint. I'm not sure of the information you're receiving or the specific accounts, but I can tell you that we are actively, have resources that are deployed. It takes several resources to keep the footprint where it is, and there is no in-and-out privileges that we're allowing in the, in the demonstration.
Okay, and my last question is, Interim Chief Bell, would you agree with me that there has been a colossal failure of intelligence and that we need to take immediate steps to make sure that intelligence gathering is better, not just for this, but going forward to the future?
So no, I wouldn't agree that it's been a colossal failure of intelligence. I do, we, we have received intelligence ongoing through this. We have had our intelligence networks continuing to gather information. What I, where I will agree with you is, in this specific area, which is an area that has been unknown to us previously to this, we actually have to look at alternative and better ways to collect better, more timely intelligence information to be able to respond to what's occurring. We have developed some of that capacity in the last number of weeks as this has unfolded in our city. But we did have an intelligence network that was established. We did receive some intelligence on what was, what was occurring or what could occur. And those steps have been taken and improved and enhanced on as we've progressed through this.
Okay, thank you. Member King, last question to you.
And I'm just going to be brief. It's not really a question. I just wanted to underline and understate what you noted, Chair, that the Police Services Board obviously does not direct police tactics or operations. We live in a democracy, but we have specific institutions, and we expect the police to police. We have institutions, and we know that the police service, under the Police Services Act, is empowered with resources, the powers, and the duty to enforce the law. So what we've heard very clearly from residents is that we want, they want, and we collectively want that task undertaken so that we can end this illegal occupation forthwith. And the last item I'll leave you with is, I did submit questions over the weekend of operational nature. I'll be submitting more questions of operational nature after this meeting, and it will be my expectation to have those questions answered in a timely fashion. Thank you so much, Chair.
Thank you. And Member Nerman, we only have a few more minutes for this meeting. Is this?
Just a very brief, very brief comment. And again, I'm coming to Interim Chief Bell on his adequate and effective police services. What my experience is, I am sixty years, that whenever the community, members of the community, they come on the road and they try to enforce the law with no respect or no faith in the police, that is the end of it. So instead, in spite of that, this weekend, we saw how on Algen Riverside, they were, they were stopping the protesters to go to the downtown core. And in spite of that, if the words is coming that police was providing or is providing adequate and effective services, I won't take that. But thank you. That was my comment.
Okay, so received on the update, received.
Received.
Item number two, the appointment of Special Constables at Carleton University that the Ottawa Police Services Board approved the appointment of Carleton University employees Jamie Baldray and Mark Prince Cox, a Special Constable pursuant to Section fifty-three of the Police Services Act in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the attached Approval of Appointment Form. Is the item carried?
Carried.
Carried. Thank you. This concludes our public agenda. I would now call for a motion to adjourn. Member Meehan? Favor, carried. Thank you very much, everyone. Be safe out there. Have a good day.
Thank you.